All right, call this council meeting for October 27th, 2020 to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Holzer?
Here.
Ms. Hermes?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Usmano?
Here.
Ms. Walter?
Here.
And Mayor Moore?
Here.
Okay, we have a prayer by Maria Walter.
Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire and to find ways to excel in our work and help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of the Lord, our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have the minutes of previous meetings, council meeting of September 22nd and the council meeting work session of October 13th. If there are no corrections, have the minutes stand as approved. Okay, and we have a presentation, do we have a presentation from the library Jennifer Weickert's here?
Hello, it's good to see all of you again.
Yeah.
A little while, but I wanted to give out just an update on how things are going over at Green Hills Library. And number one, you can see my brand new shirt here, we are in the Cincinnati Hamilton County Public Library. We are no longer the public library of Cincinnati Hamilton County.
Oh.
We have a brand new logo, we have a brand new website.
I love it.
It is really cool, it does a lot of fun stuff, it also does a lot of things differently than before. So if you're like, oh my goodness, what have you done? Please call us and we will happily guide you on how it does things because we know that change at any time is difficult. And right now I'm changing how the library rolls and it might be a thing you're just like, I don't know if I can handle this. Call us, we can help, absolutely. The Green Hills Library is open for curbside, we have been actually since the middle of July. But we've been doing lots of cool stuff even if we are only curbside. There are three locations that are doing that, Elmwood Place, Mount Humpy and us. So we are not alone, it's simply our size is small enough that it's safer, we're not letting people into the building right now. But we will do curbsides to the max for you, which means if I can bring it to the door or I can do it and then tell you how it went, I am happy to do that, whether that's picking up holds, sending a fax, getting copies or prints. And we are not charging for prints or copies right now, you can get up to 50 a day if you need them.
Gee.
So you can bring your original, hold it halfway, you can bring everything back if you need to fax something, you need jobs, some county jobs and family services, anything like that. We also have League of Women Voters, which we've been receiving a lot of phone calls about. So if anybody would like those guys, you just come to us. We're doing service out of the rear entrance, so and for the community building, come around up around behind the building all the way to the far end. And then you can either call us from your car and we'll come right up to you or you can come up to the door and we usually have a table out. And there is a doorbell on the side of the book drop now, it had been on the table for a while, that one broke, so we moved the location. Thought on the table wasn't a good idea, horizontal on the wall is much better. But we are doing all of that and we can be your personal shopper if you want a new janitorial box. You know, we can put things on hold, phone hasn't changed at all. Give us a call and we'll be happy to assist with technology, putting things on hold. We also have a wide range of take and make things. We've got little preschool storytime crafts, we've got origami frogs right now for our school age. We're doing, we've done movie bundles where we give you some popcorn to go with your movie marathon. So if you need anything, you can contact us and we are there for you. We also have a brand new partnership that we just started last week. We've only done it twice, it's on Mondays from 3:00 to 6:00. It's with La Soup, which is an organization that gets food from grocery stores and other donations, gives that food to restaurants and pays them to prepare the meals and then distributes that food for anybody who needs it. Green Hills and Deer Park are the two library locations that are doing this every Monday from 3:00 to 6:00. There's no age requirements, there's a lot less hoops and a lot of the stuff that you have to jump through. So you can come and see us at any point and we will be happy to, and we're very excited about this new partnership. It's just getting started and it will run at least through December. It's dependent on private funding, so we'll have to see how that's going for La Soup and everything else. But we want to get the word out about that one, a great deal for anybody who would like dinner, you know, come on down. We have family meals or we have individual meals and one per person, that's about the old rule. We are also going fine free throughout 2020. So if you've been going back to these books for a while, oh, you don't bring it back long enough. We're gonna say, we're gonna charge you for a replacement until you do bring it back to us. But otherwise, we're not charging overuse because we know things are very difficult right now and we're just trying to simplify things a little bit more. What we are doing is quarantining materials for four days. So if you retarded in the book drop, I promise it's in the bin and it will come off, but it takes a few days. And if it's over a weekend or something, sometimes I can add a couple of days to it as well. So if you see it on there after we call me, we'll fix it. If anybody has any problems with their card and calls at the library, we'll be happy to help. If you need to print something, if you email it to us, greenhills@cinsantaielibrary.org, we'll be happy to do that for you also. We also have a lot of digital resources, I would help you navigate those. We also, you'll see some familiar faces on some of our online programs on YouTube and some of the other things. Ms. Amy and Ms. Kathy, I know have recorded programs for us. So we're trucking right along, we're still there, small but mighty, and we're doing really well and we are there for you all. If you do need in person, access to the computers, which is the one thing that we really can't do, Forest Park, North Central, Wyoming, all of those three that I mentioned, Elmwood Place, Mount Humpy and us are open for limited persons. So you're welcome to stop by the library and those locations if we can't help you with the computer access here. And one last exciting thing is in a few weeks, we are hoping to have new lighting in the parking lot in the back for the school, especially if we're going to be doing curbside for a while.
Okay.
You know, please do keep an eye on that, so if you see things going up in that direction, we're hoping in the next few weeks. And then that should improve a great deal for, the time change is coming and it's going to be getting earlier. So we understand that, so we're moving forward on improving that. And I think that was all of my thoughts, but if there's any questions or concerns.
I do have a question. In the past, I've always given you bags with pencils and colors and stuff like that for Halloween. And I hesitated because of the situation, I didn't know how was the candle. You said that you're making baggies for kids to pick up or something like that?
We are doing various crafts and other things that different age groups can take and make, so.
And then take it out, they come and pick it up, mom picks it up?
They come and ask for us and we hand them, we're putting them in lunch bags mostly.
Okay, are you going to be there tomorrow, about what time?
I'll be there.
Can I call you? I have the bag already made, but I didn't know what to do with it.
Again, we will be doing things like that, we may indeed put them aside just for a few days just to be certain of everything. All right. Actual quarantine.
Okay, no problem.
But we will have them and we'd be happy, you know, we are.
Okay, so I can call you and then leave it there by the door and you take care of it then?
Yes, I'm happy to.
Okay, awesome.
I'll be there tomorrow. And one other change is we do have unified hours across our library system. That's Monday through Saturday, 10:00 to 6:00, which is a little bit simple to try and remember, but it is a shift for us, so. But all of the libraries are doing that.
And you're accepting everything that I did before, candies, chocolate, pencils, colored pencils?
I might hesitate on the candy just with concerns for everything, the inanimate things that we can then make sure are safe.
And those are just pencils and colored pencils?
That would be helpful.
And maybe a coloring book or something?
If there's anything like that.
Okay, I'll add that to it.
We've already been distributing things to that.
Okay.
But much as I would enjoy the treats, maybe not the things here.
But that's what I hesitated to drop it off, I wanted to ask you first.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I just want to say my little one loves all of the storytimes that you guys have been putting up on YouTube and all of that. And I've been sharing them back home and I want everything and people really appreciate those, so.
Because we want to meet people where they are.
They're great.
Get them as much as we can.
Yeah.
It was pretty 2020.
That it is. Thank you.
All right. This is the time for residents to comment on matters before council. Wait and recognize, please come forward to the lecture and give your name and address and state your comments or questions. It's not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to three minutes, speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
Wow. Well, I'm Utah. Okay. Well, I'm not gonna say how I feel about different issues or candidates, but I do urge everyone to get out and vote because we are fortunate enough to live in a country where we still do have free elections.
Amen.
Exercise your franchise and if you have any doubts, I would strongly suggest maybe talking to somebody who has moved to this country from another country and has endured and experienced the lack of those freedoms. And so I urge everyone to get out there and vote this year.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, reports of village officials, like, should they, anybody else out there? This is like a meeting of the older, olden days or something when only. Okay, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll start off tonight talking about the COVID money, such a timely issue. As we've discussed over the last couple of meetings, we have been fortunate enough to get, for us, a rather significant dollar amount. So I wanted to let you know, we have a very tight timeframe and I appreciate Deb being here tonight in case you have any specifics. But just know that we are focusing our expenditures, not, and we've been spending like since March. So obviously we have a lot of expenses that were associated with the pool, with signage, cleaning, sanitizing, all those kinds of things. And helping with anything that does help us to improve our cleaning and our sanitizing and to keep the workspaces clean is something that we'll be focusing on as well as public spaces. We are purchasing a large sprayer of disinfectant that will allow us to more easily spray like our playgrounds, you know, the shelter, the benches, anywhere where the public would be, the pool deck, that'll be huge for that. We are also focusing on anything that eliminates the virus, the allergens from our environment. And that's gonna include some new air filtration systems that we'll be putting in this building. We're gonna be updating council chambers to get rid of the carpeting, carpeting covered here as well as the podium that just, you know, everything adheres to it, it's tough to clean that and it's also difficult to spray it. Same with the chairs out there, we hope to be able to replace those with something that we can be more easily spraying and cleaning down. And I do want to point out the barrier sitting over there between Mr. Lee and his daughter.
It needs to be larger.
That wouldn't be the size. But ultimately, this, the dais, can I say it right, dais? Will, it'll be set up for 12 people and that will be between each of them. It'll be removable though, so hopefully one day we won't need to have the barriers, but they'll be in place.
Oh no, this is permanent.
You like that?
Yeah.
You can choose to keep it up, that'll be your choice, but let's see, I mentioned the chairs, you know, any kind of porous materials or anything that things cling to, we're gonna try to get rid of and replace with something else, so. We also want to do, we're gonna make a couple of improvements that will enhance our ability for the social distancing from each other as well as from the public to make it safe for everybody. Already mentioned the shields, we are getting those and have already placed them on desktops where employees sit across from each other. We have some larger ones that roll to go in maybe like walkways, like we go past Deb's office, you know, she's sitting right there, everybody passes back and forth, so that's gonna be a placement for one. PD has some, but we like the roller ones because we can move those around as we need to. If we have meetings, you know, we can put these things on the tables, so I think we'll have a lot of flexibility there. Oh, and we're gonna be installing a new transaction window in the foyer, so that will actually be a second one. But if, heaven forbid, that we're gonna be in a position again where we have to lock the door, it'll, that'll allow us to communicate better with our residents and help them without exposing them or staff to more whatever it is that's in the air right now, and there's a lot of it, so everybody be careful. I did put out a memo to staff, again, a follow-up policy since back in, what was it, March 14th, I think was the fourth, first one. It's kinda hard to believe we're so far into it, but a lot of the policies are still in place. The one that we're really, really serious about is the face mask, staying minimum of six feet away and the new time period is 15 minutes, but that's not all at once. That's like adding it up through the course of the day, which is a little tough, so. Point being, just talk and run, you know, whatever you think about it, just keep moving. But now, you know, when we're in our own offices, it's okay, but we will be adamant about people keeping their masks on and protecting. It's best protection really for the person who may be carrying it and not even realize that they're carrying it, so. We have learned a whole lot recently. So that was just kind of in a nutshell, we'll have more updates. Maybe I will take advantage of the fact that Deb's here right now and let you know that we're looking at potentially if there is some stuff that we can be purchasing for the fire department that will require an action of council at the next meeting because we would have to do what's called a sub-recipient agreement with them. So we are looking into that as well. Any questions on that? How did your meeting? How did your meeting go? We didn't get together with the. We did, yeah, that was right after our last meeting, it went really well. It was just interesting to hear what everybody was doing and I felt good, I felt like we were on the cutting edge there of things we had already thought of and actually had already purchased, so. Yeah, it went well, those are always really useful meetings, so. Anybody else right now, we'll keep you posted on where we are with it, but I think we're doing a good job spending our money. And you do actually have an item on your agenda tonight that will allow us to put it towards salaries, public safety salaries. Deb, any more comments on that or maybe at the time of the legislation, if you could?
We can, when the legislation comes up, but it's, it just, it just gives us the legal latitude to include our safety salaries when it's COVID related for whatever needs may come up or heaven forbid, you know, we have any officers that actually come down with COVID and are out for a while or something like that. And it's also, you know, it's just, it's a good document to have further down the road when the auditors come in as well. We are documenting every single thing along the way, any payments coming in, every payment going out, copies of everything. So when the auditors do come in, and we are due again in 21 to be visited, that they will have a good clean record because this is gonna be a hot topic, of course. So we are, you know, very careful every step of the way with every dollar spent and every, every plan along the way for best dollar spent for the citizens.
Okay, great. Couple other things I want to mention, the first phase of the sidewalk repair I think will be completed this week. At this point in time, I think we'll wait until next year to start the additional phases to make sure that our finances are all A-OK, but we're pleased to be having that first phase completed. Also, for the first time, we're gonna be using our new construction area signs that, if you recall, in one of our committee meetings and I think in a work session, we talked about the construction area. The sign actually says, "Construction area, limited parking restrictions" or something like that. And they've been posted on Flanders and down by Funston, they're highly visible, so. We're kind of excited to have those up and giving the residents a warning that the construction's coming. And the contractor is also gonna be posting Tuesday, two days in advance, but at least they know at this point in time to get ready for it. So that should be helpful, I think that was a good idea. Then another item I do want to mention is the Community Development Block Grant Program, which comes around this time every three years. I think we talked about this briefly before, but now the program guidelines have actually come out. They're not going to have public hearings like they have in the past. So what I am gonna suggest that we do, this is anew to a couple council people, that we have the opportunity, we get about $45,000 over a three-year period and we have been using it for a housing improvement repair grant program, which has been popular with residents. It's always a good feeling to be able to grant them money and they get some cool improvements done to their homes. I would recommend we stay with that program and as a second option, it would be your choice which way we go. But as another option, we might want to consider using it for, we can use it for community parks. We do have our new park that's kind of the high end because of COVID and a lot of other sources aren't available right now. So that might be another option. They're asking for you to do a public notice and give people like five days to comment. I thought about, what I'm thinking I will do is write those projects up, put them out there for comments as well as ask for any other ideas for projects for this funding. And then it would be at the November, our work session, I would bring that to you. We could talk about the projects as well as if we want to continue in the program itself, so.
Is there any place for people to look at with the scope of the money?
Yeah, I'll put that up with the, with the description.
Rather than that?
Yeah, you're right. No, no, because you're absolutely right, they are limited to what you can use it for, so I will definitely do that. And since this is a week for the journal, I think I'll plan to put an article in the journal and as well as get it on the website, things like that, to get some input. So if that timing's all right with everybody, we'll go for that. And I think that's all I have right now.
Comments or questions?
I have a question about the sidewalk program, if you could just clarify, there were some people that had reached out to me and were curious, well, does that entail, does that include any cracks that are seen in the sidewalk? And what portion of that, like anything that happens on the sidewalk is the village ever responsible for paying for versus the village?
Okay, this portion is, it's just to eliminate the trip hazard. Unless the crack is significant enough to generate a trip hazard, cracks will not be addressed. Also, anything more greater than two inches will be addressed with actual sidewalk replacement of blocks. And at this point in time, the village is funding that.
Okay, so the village is doing this whole sidewalk program, but in other pieces of sidewalk breakage or lifting, then the residents in charge of?
Right, actually residents are responsible for it, but it's been a while and we've been trying to get a good program to lower costs. So that's why we are doing this portion right now. You know, certainly if somebody wants theirs done sooner or once, yeah, they have some kind of breakage or something, they should replace it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on, the law director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one, one very quick item and it's really a follow-up from something we talked about, I think, last time. And again, it doesn't apply necessarily to us because we're back having live meetings. But I think we had, I had mentioned that the law that allowed those Zoom-type meetings was, the way the law was worded, it would expire when the declaration of emergency ended or December 1st, whichever came first. Senate Bill 365 has been introduced that would remove the December 1st part of that.
I had a feeling.
Which would then allow you to continue doing video conference, teleconference, public meetings as long as the declaration of emergency is in place. It's been introduced, referred to a committee, that's where it stands now, but for it to have any real impact, it'll have to be finished and voted on and approved and everything by December 1st or else we'll be in a weird spot about that, so. That just came up, I know, I think last time someone had asked, well, could they change that? Yes, they could, and they've started the process to do that. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks. Heard your counsel, time to call her.
No report.
Okay, chief of police Neil Ferdinand.
Thanks, Mayor. We had thieves active in our community. They struck not only us, but in the south and to the north of us. They struck primarily overnight on October 14th and October 16th. Probably the worst offense each night was a stolen car. One had some mitigating circumstances to it. There was actually a key left on the trunk of the car, believe it or not. It was only driven a couple of blocks and we recovered the vehicle. The second vehicle was not immediately recovered, that happened overnight on the 16th, on the other side of town. But that vehicle was recovered today. We've been working during the day processing fingerprints and other evidence on that. We were very fortunate in today's electronic age, there's lots of video surveillance that's available, so we're actively working many of these cases and we would like nothing better than to be charging suspects. So we'll be working towards that. I can tell you that the officers have probably spent a little more gas money than might have been in Deb's budget this past month because we have been controlling very heavily in our neighborhoods. In fact, if there is a lighter side to any of this, Officer Bacon noted on the evening of the 17th, conducted preventative patrol on the west side of the village shortly thereafter, received a call from a resident on La Gorya reporting some bright lights on her street. I advised the resident it was me with my floodlights on, conducting extra patrols. Complainant was told to call anytime she has concerns. The citizen responded to keep doing what we're doing. So an additional patrol was made in the area after the phone call was received. So we're remaining extra vigilant in our neighborhoods. But for those that might be listening tonight through Waycross, we once again have three points that we'd really like to make. Please lock your vehicles, never, ever leave valuables in your car, especially those that might be left in plain sight. The loot that typically is taken in these instances includes things that I personally don't understand why anyone would ever leave in their car, such as wallets, cash, credit cards, portable, electronic equipment such as computers, tablets or phones, please, 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 never leave those in your cars. And in a few instances, we had people that would call us the next morning and say, you know, the dogs were barking or I thought I heard something, please call us immediately. If you see what you think is a crime of progress, don't hesitate to use 911. You can always call us at 513-825-2101 if you see something that just looks off or somebody is acting suspiciously. It may be nothing, but we'd rather check it out and that be the case than this, the possibility of apprehending a thief as he or she is doing his bidding. On another note, school is sort of at the moment back in session. There's some school buses that are out, there's children on our streets again. Recently, the streets have been wet and slippery. We ask you to watch your speed, we've had speed complaints in several areas of town. One of the tools that we have at our disposal is the speed sign and that's currently up on one of our streets in the J section. What we typically do with that, in case you don't have an understanding of how that is deployed, we'll put it up and we don't turn it on for a week. And that gives us a baseline of just what the general speed is in that neighborhood. It records the speed of every car all day long, 24/7. It goes by in the direction, it'll give us an average, a high, and a low, then we turn it off. Usually, the speeds will drop a little bit, then the sign goes away, then out comes a cruiser with radar. So, that's how we've been attaching these, it's been very successful, and anyone that might be listening that has concerns, please let us know. We'd like to move this around and address as many complaints as possible. With summer over, we move into the period of time where we try and get a lot of our training done. One of the requests that we've had from our officers is to do some scenario-based training and some specialized training. We've tried to do that on a lower budget, however, we found this has been very effective. Right here in this room, we used our PowerPoint projector and the screen, and we had some excellent training that Corporal Mike Mathis did for our officers on search warrants. It was a very thorough PowerPoint presentation, it was basically walkthrough, how to execute any search warrant, and it even incorporated electronic search warrants, because so much of what we do now is get things off of social media, or off of some type of electronic media, so our officers are all very well-versed in how to do that. On October fifteenth, in one of the firebays, we did scenario-based defensive tactics training. Ann Ward, Brian Johnson, Mike Mathis, Bonda Sekoi, I wish you could have watched some of them, they should get Academy Awards. They were the actors in some of these scenarios, and they portrayed some of the actual situations that we run across, and what we're trying to do is give particularly a lot of our younger officers some kind of a advanced training for things that we just know they're going to encounter. So, it was very good training, I think we not only had fun, but most importantly, we learned a lot. We critique each session afterwards, and we do a lot of, here's how you can do it better, here's what to do, here's what not to do, but we look forward to further scenario-based training. I should mention that our two officers, Eric Tricase and Zach Clark, volunteered and coordinated all of this, and they put together a curriculum for the training, and did an excellent job. And as a matter of fact, Zach Clark is off right now, and I just passed him downstairs, and he suited up, and he's going down to guard the body of the sheriff's deputy that was, that died recently as a result of an on-duty accident, and this is something that they handle, County Honor Guard does, that just makes me shake my head, and as I admire how they do this, but that sheriff's deputy will not be left alone until his funeral services, so an officer will be at his side, and I will be with Zach Clark. We did do some additional training, we actually had a participant in the council meeting last time, Christina Erby, who came to our Citizens Police Academy several years ago, and she got us a seat courtesy of the University of Cincinnati and the think tank on equity and inclusion, and I participated in that virtually. We did receive another grant, we received a grant for the ballistic, outer ballistic vests that were purchased, and we had already received a pretty significant one from the State Attorney General's Office. We received an additional twenty-two hundred from the federal government, so we will be doing our best to minimize any kind of match that we have to use of local funds to complete those purchases. This past few weeks, we've received flu shots, courtesy of David Hoffman and the Green Hills Fire Department, we're very appreciative to them for keeping us safe. Speaking of our Citizens Police Academy, we have two members who wish to remain anonymous that have been bringing up pastries and baked goods. We can't possibly eat any more of those ourselves, so we've been getting them out to the community. We have a list of people that have been in need in the past, and we've contacted them, and we've been distributing those, but if anyone is watching that knows of a family, or someone that may need any of those, we get those on a periodic basis, and we love to get them to the right places. We've had several officers that were commended for their kindness and good work. Officer David Bacon worked a case on a runaway, and was very empathetic and very good in doing some homework. He previously came to us from Mount Healthy, and this is where the runaway was found, and he did a lot of work down there to try and find her, and Sergeant Patton wrote to him, it is a credit to your ability and to your do-your-best attitude that you have, Officer Bacon, tonight you gave us some peace of mind in your parents, knowing that their daughter is okay. Officer Patton commended Officer Lenhoff, Rob Lenhoff, who stayed after his tour was over on his own to help with that, and Sergeant Patton wrote, there's an old saying that it takes a village story as a child, it is also true when it comes to policing, working together so that we can be the best professional police department that others look up to. Again, thank you so much for your help, nice job. Julie Sheets, who is a firefighter paramedic on our fire department, commended Officer Cody Ritchie for a call that he made earlier this month on October the sixth. She said, I wanted to give a shout-out of appreciation writing to me, and she said to Officer Ritchie for his actions and help on our squad run today. We were dispatched for a person hemorrhaging, when we arrived on the scene, he was holding direct pressure on the wound, using all safety precautions. He did an excellent job of caring for the patient prior to the squad's arrival, and then continued to assist throughout the call. His actions were extremely helpful to the patient and to the fire department, wanted to acknowledge his efforts and thank him for a job well done. We have Trick or Treat, as everyone knows, coming up on October thirty-first, from six to eight, if you take a look at the village website, the manager has the guidelines from the state posted that may help you get through that event in this crazy year safely. Also, on October twenty-ninth, a couple days before Halloween, from one to three, free fresh produce will be given away at six-eighty West Sharon Road, just down the road from us. That's the Forest Chapel, and there will be a group down there distributing their free food. Statistically, during the month of September, we made eight criminal arrests, two for disorderly conduct, two for drug offenses, one each for domestic violence, criminal trespass, and theft. We responded to one hundred and eighty-eight incidents, including three disorderly conduct runs, six domestic disputes, nine juvenile complaints, nine suspicious persons, two-thousand five alarms. We provided mutual aid to our surrounding agencies, and seven instances, we issued nineteen traffic citations, eighteen warnings, and we investigated seven traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments or questions?
I just want to commend the chief for the beautiful reading of, at Waycross.
Thank you.
All right. Add to, encourage people to go vote, and remind residents of Green Hills that we do have a renewal ballot issue on the ballot, and for recreation, so consider continuing that, if you would. For Mayor's Courts, I have the month of August and the month of September. Checks were issued to the State of Ohio in August for six-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, Hamilton County, twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, and to the Village of Green Hills, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. For the month of September, State of Ohio got seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars, Hamilton County, twenty-four dollars, and the Village of Green Hills, three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and ten cents. That's all I have. Committee reports, Recreation Cable TV and Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just reiterate, what you mentioned is to go out to the polls and vote, and please consider voting for the recreation levy. I'm more than willing to chat with you if you have any questions, so feel free to reach out to me. I also wanted to mention that we did reschedule our movie night from last Friday to this Friday, just because we're supposed to have better weather, so that's still in the calendar, still planned, so please come on out to the Commons for that, it's Casper the Friendly Ghost still. And then, in addition, we'll be sending out information soon about a fall door decorating contest. We're gonna do fall doors of the Green Hills, and have you submit photos of your doors decorated, and we'll pick a couple winners for gift cards and stuff to kind of keep that friendly spirit out there, so I believe that's all I've got.
What time does the movie start?
Uh, what time did we say, Avon? I think it was six-thirty, yeah, six-thirty.
And how will the Commons be, just similar to the concerts on the Commons?
Yeah, it's gonna be set up similar to the concert in the Commons to help with social distancing, bring your mask, definitely grab food at the Troubadour, or the village, you know, the Green Hill sandwich shop somewhere, come on down and enjoy the movie afterwards.
Go to the bathroom before you come.
Yes.
Yeah. No port.
Okay. All right, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Mayor Walther.
We just had a meeting today, and the one concern that I wanted to bring up was, and I will reiterate the consensus of that, was that for our guests that come in here, even though there is a number of, for occupancy in this place, we are subjected now to have twenty-five percent of that number per the COVID virus regulations from our governor, and that means fourteen people, because that counts us too here. So, fourteen guests can come, and we have, put the chairs where they need to be, et cetera. We wanted to make sure that we were compliant to that, and ask also to wear a mask. That was, that was it for the, for the committee meeting today.
Great service in streets, Jennifer Rose, Monica.
Thank you. Not to be redundant about the sidewalk cutting, but I did want to mention the streets that they had planned in this cycle, so to make sure that you knew what streets were repaired and which weren't. They had slated four-hundred-and-eight trip hazards, and the streets that they had, that they have or will repair is Avanel, Ashby, Andover, Cromwell, Drummond, DeWitt, Damon, Dayspring, Deer Hill, and Chalmers. And then, again, that's a one, it's a half to two-inch gap, so that, that is a planer slope that they're cutting to make it, so it's a trip hazard, so the trip hazard is eliminated. Also, for litter concerns, we were concerned about the amount of trash and all that kind of stuff. If you all have any questions about what you're supposed to be putting in garbage cans, how you're supposed to be doing it, we came up with a flyer that's available, and it kind of tells you about the guidelines that we ask about the trash collection and recycling, so that's available if you all need more clarification. Thank you, that's all I have.
Great. Community Development, Jeff Halter. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Our committee met today as well. We did discuss a couple things that passed old business. We had talked about previously parking on the west side, and one of the things that we came up with, or was discussed, was there were some current concerns for garbage trucks and emergency vehicles, and part of the A block. What has happened is there is posting for no parking on Wednesdays, which is our trash collection day. That seems to be going well. And then, we also talked about some parking on the east side that was brought up on Farragut in a previous meeting, and there has been new markings on the pavement pushing back the parking that should help with the visibility. So, be conscious of the new markings and follow those guidelines. It was brought to our attention about some park, some traffic issues on northbound Wynton with the median, and that is something the village has been addressing. There have been a couple people, a couple vehicles that have hit the point of the median, so changing some of the marking to eliminate some of that problem. Part of the, it's a new traffic pattern, so sometimes it takes a little while to get things properly marked, or not, I don't want to say properly, because they're not improperly marked, but to allow for the differences and to make adjustments based on what the current practice is. We also discussed CARES funding, as the manager mentioned, the volunteer fire department, since they are not owned by us, it's a separate entity, we wanted to make sure there was a way for them to receive CARES funding, which the manager and finance director behind have, will hopefully be able to get an agreement on our next agenda, so that we'll be able to use some of the CARES funding for the volunteer fire department, and of course, also looking at the possibilities for the police department using the funding appropriately as well. And I was happy to hear about the air filtration in the building, just preventing any kind of airborne pathogens, and that's great that the systems will be able to be updated, safer for our employees and safer for anyone who comes into our building. That is all we really talked about. We did talk about the budget for 2021, just more of an update to make sure we were on track for next year, and also the compensation of personnel going into the new year.
The change of the clock?
Oh, yes, and also, this is Fall Back Sunday, so at two AM Sunday morning, please turn your clocks back, or you can do it before you go to bed, but also check the, change your batteries in your fire, your smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, change them twice a year for Fall Back and for Spring Forward. Just remember Fall Back, which means at two AM, it becomes one AM, or just remember that before you go to bed, put your clocks back, and it's a little bit easier nowadays because your phones, most of your phones do it, so it'll be updated, except for some of our older cars, you have to change those around, so just remember Fall Back, Spring Forward. That's it.
Finance and Audit, Jacqueline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October thirteenth, council members received the finance director's report for the month of September, a copy of the overall recap page set your places tonight. September's results reflect the third month in a row of positive returns for both income tax and real estate receipts, putting the village on par with fiscal year 2019. Overall, the general fund revenues, while still off six-point-two-five percent year to year, the general fund balance is two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars above the balance at the same point this time in 2019. While a great deal of that can be attributed to the management of expenses by staff, we are on target as far as the percentage of expenditures to appropriated funds, and to date, have covered all our normal and expected transfers from the general fund to other accounts. No date has been set or selected for the committee to meet with the finance director and village managers on budgets for 2021, but that should be coming up in the near future, and as, that will be coming to council as usual in December. That's the end of my report, unless anyone has questions.
All right, we have some unfinished business. We have ordinance number 2020-03-LNR for a second reading, amending section 335.09 of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding front license plates. Ms. Walther?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2020-03-LNR, amending section 335, period, zero-nine, A of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances regarding front license plates, whereas the State of Ohio recently amended section 4503.21 of the Ohio Revised Code, rescinding the requirement for a vehicle in most cases to display a front license plate or a motor vehicle, and whereas, council for the Village of Green Hills has determined that it is in the best interest of the village to have its comparable ordinance reflect the recent change in state law, and whereas, it is desire of council to adopt such ordinance. Now, therefore, being ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio members elected there to concurring, section one, that section 335, period, zero-nine of the Village of Green Hills codified orders delete the references to the requirement for a front license plate in most cases to comply with the current state law, and that the language of the section reflect the language as contained in section 4503, period, to one of the Ohio Revised Code as set forth in exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Section two, that all other provisions of the Village of Green Hills codified ordinances shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, that this ordinance shall take effect to be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, then, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Osmanoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Halter?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number 2020-03-LNR passes.
And we also add that now that we're talking about license plates, whenever you renew your license plates, make sure that it says Green Hills, so we will get the monies for that renewal of the license plate. Thank you.
Thanks. That's important to help maintain our streets. Okay, next, new business, we have resolution number 2020-26-F, a resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2020-26-F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, whereas the 2020 annual appropriations that were adopted on December tenth, 2019, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, section 5705 dot thirty-six A five, therefore, an amended certificate of an estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section one, since certain actions are needed in the monies appropriated so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditures are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2020. Fund description, Coronavirus Relief Fund, number 2151. Original appropriation, eighty thousand three hundred and four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Change, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, for a total of two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Section two, that following transfers of fund be made from the previously appropriated monies, from none. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, clerk call the roll.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2020-26-F passes.
Next resolution, number 2020-27-F, resolution finding that police safety personnel are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. And do you have this dissertation?
Yes.
At any point, raise our hand if you need someone to top end.
I don't wanna suggest that anyone was for both in their adoption of this resolution, number 2020-27-F, resolution finding that the public safety personnel are substantially dedicated to the mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, whereas the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, 116 Public Law, 1136, also known as the CARES Act, signed into law by the President of the United States on March twenty-seventh, 2020. And whereas in House Bill 481 of the one hundred and thirty-third General Assembly, House Bill 481, the Ohio General Assembly established a process for distributing funds provided by the CARES Act. And whereas House Bill 481 required political subdivisions receiving funds under section one of the CARES Act to pass a resolution affirming that the funds from the county Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover cost of the political subdivision consistent with requirements of section 5001 of the CARES Act as dedicated in forty-two USC 801D and any applicable regulations before receiving said funds. And whereas on July twenty-eighth, 2020, this council adopted resolution 2020-14-F and affirmed that all funds received from Hamilton County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund pursuant to House Bill 481 be expended only to cover cost of the Village of Green Hills consistent with the requirements of section 5001 of the CARE Act, CARES Act as described in forty-two USC 801D and any applicable regulations and guidance. And whereas the Ohio Budget, Office of Budget and Management, OBM, in its guidance and frequently asked questions, updated August twenty-eighth, 2020, OBM guidance, directed local jurisdictions to evaluate all proposed expenditures based upon guidance contained within the U.S. Department of Treasury Guidance and Coronavirus Relief Fund frequently asked questions. And whereas the OBM guidance further advised that it is presumed for administrative convenience that personnel costs related to public safety are substantially dedicated for the purposes of the CARE Act unless the chief executive of the entity receiving the funds determines otherwise. And whereas the United States Department of Treasury and its Coronavirus Relief Fund Guidance for state, territorial, local, and tribal governments dated September second to 2020, advised that payroll expenditures for the public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency are eligible expenditures of CARE Act funds. And whereas the Treasury guidance further advised that local governments may presume that public health and public safety employees meet the substantially dedicated test unless the chief executive or equivalent of the relative government determines that the specific circumstances indicate otherwise. This means that if this presumption applies, work performed by such employees is considered to be substantially different use than accounted for in the most recently approved budget as of March twenty-seventh, 2020. All costs of such employees may be covered using payments from the fund for services provided during the period that begins March first, 2020, and ends on December thirtieth, 2020. And whereas the Treasury guidance further advised that public safety employees include police officers, including state police officers, sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, firefighters, emergency medical responders, correctional and detention officers, and those who directly support such employees, such as dispatchers and supervisory personnel. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village, Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio, members thereto concurring that, section one, in reliance on the Treasury guidance and OBM guidance, and having examined the circumstances of the Village of Green Hills, this council finds and determines that a Treasury presumption that the Village of Green Hills public safety employees meet the substantially dedicated test applies, and no specific circumstances rebut that presumption. This council further finds and determines that the following Village of Green Hills public safety positions are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. Police department, patrol officers, sergeants, lieutenants, corporals, chief of police. Therefore, current and future distributions of CARE Act funds to the Village of Green Hills may be expended to cover the payroll and benefits of the public safety positions listed above. Section two, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were taken in open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and any committees that resulted in the formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements. Section three, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest possible date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Any comments? Is there anything you wanted to repeat?
Yeah, I missed the whole thing, yes. Was that unnecessarily long or?
All I can tell you is it's essentially identical, with the exception of the specific offices or officers or classifications you put, that almost every community in the surrounding counties are using. It was a form that, I'm not sure who created it or where it came from.
I think it came from the Office of Budget and Management or the Department of the Treasury, one of the two, but it is a set format that all of the municipalities are using.
I'm pretty sure it came from the federal government at some point.
I'm pretty sure the communities take like title only then, because that was unnecessarily long.
All right.
Set all the things that you need to say.
We had Jordan.
Yes, thank you.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2020-27-F passes. Next resolution, number 2020-28-SNS, resolution authorizing assessments on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills. Ms. Osmondoglu?
Resolution number 2020-28-SNS, resolution authorizing assessment on certain properties in the Village of Green Hills, whereas the village has given proper notice to the owners of certain real property in the Village of Green Hills regarding the removal of vegetation, refuse, garbage, and other and/or debris from the properties listed below. And whereas the owners of said properties did not take action to remedy the violations, and therefore, the Village of Green Hills contracted to remove vegetation, refuse, garbage, and/or debris, and now seeks to collect said expenses by authorizing the placement of a lien upon the lands and collect it as other taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, section one, that the village council hereby certifies that the cost of such labor, together with the expenses relative thereto, be filed on the return and statement to the Hamilton County Commissioners as an assessment against the properties listed and places a lien against the properties by the auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, as follows. Parcel number 597-0060-0050-00, address 51 Damon Road, owner Cherokee Properties LLC, cost two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Parcel number 597-0070-0258-00, address 121 Burley Circle, owner Kami Born, cost three hundred and ninety-six dollars and four cents. Parcel number 597-0030-0017-00, address 35 Farragut Road, owner Logan Brady, cost one hundred and eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Parcel number 597-0030-0020-00, address 6 Falcon Lane, owner S L T Properties of Ohio LLC, cost one hundred and seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Parcel number 597-0040-0053-00, address 39 Flanders Lane, owner Olson Homes LLC, cost two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-four cents. The total cost is one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and six cents. Section two, all amounts collected as a result of this resolution shall be placed into the general fund of the Village of Green Hills. Section three, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its passage. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments? Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Hermes?
Aye.
Ms. Metz?
Aye.
Ms. Walther?
Aye.
Ms. Osmondoglu?
Aye.
Mr. Holter?
Aye.
And Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number 2020-28-SNS passes. And that's all I show on our agenda. Don't forget Halloween, Saturday night, follow the state guidelines, movie, Friday night, this Friday.
Trick or treat, six to eight.
Right, six to eight for trick or treat, movie started at six thirty, starts at six thirty. Anything else?
Turn back your clocks on right after you trick or treat on Saturday, so you're ready for Sunday morning. And also, you should have been receiving turkey raffle information. I should have mentioned this in my report. The turkey raffle is virtual this year and will be on Saturday, November twenty-first, but they are doing a silent auction on Facebook. So the virtual one will be on Facebook Live, but the silent auction is gonna be up, I believe, on Tuesday, the sixteenth, I should look at my calendar, but the week before, the turkey raffle, they will be having a silent auction and it'll be on their Facebook page. So please go to the Green Hills Fire Department's Facebook page, check it out, and if you're willing, going to participate in the raffle, volunteers should be dropping off these lovely green, bright green envelopes on your doors. Fill out the raffle tickets inside and put them back on the doors as indicated on the label.
Okay, nothing else, meeting adjourned.